All right. You guys ready? The time is now 6:30, and I'll call the November 2nd regular meeting of the Alfreda Planning Commission to Order. Thank you for everyone for joining us, and just as a reminder, if you have a cellphone, if you could silence it, we appreciate it. I am vice chair, going to be stepping in for the chairman this evening, and we have Commissioner Perkins, and Commissioner Rocco is out this evening. And we have the meeting minutes, our first item of business is the meeting minutes from October 5th, 2023. Did anyone have any comments or changes? Nope?
Sorry, hitting the wrong button. I don't have any comments or changes. I'll offer a motion to approve the minutes from the October 5th, 2023 planning session.
Thank you, Commissioner Richards. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Yep, abstaining, too abstaining. All right, we do have five items on the public hearing tonight. If you are here for MP-23-05-CLUP-2504-Z-23-12-V-23-20, brand properties at 3650 Brookside Parkway, it has been deferred by the applicant until December 7th, so that will not be heard this evening, so I just wanted to let you guys know. All right, I think, Michael, we're ready. Our first item of business is going to be Z-23-11 OC Place, 4050 Kimball Bridge Road. I believe you're presenting, thank you.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The first item before you is a request from Castleview Homes, they're requesting a rezoning to allow for the construction of two for sale, single-family detached lots on 2.49 acres. A rezoning is requested from AG Agriculture to R15. And I do have the location map on the overhead, property is located at 4050 Kimball Bridge Road, near the southwest corner of Kimball Bridge Road and Vice Road. The proposed density for these two lots would be .80 dwelling units per acre. This item was considered at the October 5th Planning Commission meeting, there was one public comment in opposition with concerns over stormwater removal, the site plan didn't have home footprints, they wanted to see a landscape plan. It was mentioned that the property should be sold to Johns Creek for overflow parking for OC Park. Ultimately, Planning Commission deferred the applicant's request to this meeting, and they did ask the applicant to look at the home renderings that could be customized, as well as address any concerns with the neighbors and the footprints on the site plan. The applicant, since the October 5th meeting, the applicant did provide an updated site plan and two home renderings. One of the home renderings shows a right and left garage on the house. They also provided a site plan showing that the home footprints could be oriented in different directions, and that the garages would not be facing Kimball Bridge Road. And then the applicant did mail an additional public notice to five residents from Kimball Bridge Crossing that signed into the sign-in sheet at the community zoning information meeting, in an attempt to see if there was any concerns that they could address, and they did not receive any responses. So this is the additional information, the site plan that the applicant provided. Should recall, at the last meeting, we did discuss that the homes would be oriented to Kimball Bridge Road, and that is a statement in condition number one. So the way that this home is proposed to be oriented, this would not comply with that condition. So it's really, there's two pages to this. What the applicant was trying to show you is that the homes could be configured in different orientations to the road, and they could still screen the garages from the road. So that was the purpose of this document, the two site plans. Based on condition one, that says that the home should be oriented to Kimball Bridge Road, the applicant would be limited to this site plan. So this is the site plan with the home's front door facing the Kimball Bridge Road. And then these are the additional renderings that the applicant provided, and these home, these footprints match the footprints that were shown on the site plan. So this is the home footprint that would fit on the rear lot, which is Lot 2. And this is just a different view of that same home. And then this is the rendering that shows the garages on the right side of the home, as well as on the left side of the home. And that footprint is representative of the footprint shown on Lot 1. And again, just to remind you, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to 12 conditions. I did read those conditions at the last meeting, so it wasn't my intent to read through them again this evening, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Commissioners, any questions? Nope? Good job, Michael, thank you. We now give the applicant an opportunity to come speak. If you could make sure when you do talk to give your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. Take a seat here. My name is Nick Griffiths, I live at 844 180th Avenue East, Redding, Chorors, Florida. I'm with Earth Design Engineering. I did the site plan here for the proposed development. Just use, Michael already has up. As mentioned, we were asked to provide site plan and some renderings that were more specific. We provided that information, we also reached out to the neighbors that had attended the community zoning information meeting, just kind of letting them know how we were trying to address their concerns that they expressed during the meeting. And we have, as far as, as my, like, I'm just kind of reiterating a lot of what Michael said. We did provide two site plans, one that was able to show that the homes could face Kimball Bridge Road, and then another one that was an alternative, just to show that we could meet the desire for the homes, for the driveways to not face Kimball Bridge Road, even if we oriented it slightly differently. This is Mehdi and Karush, they're going to be the home builders. And you have any additional information you would like to add?
We're okay with all the conditions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the Commissioners for the applicant?
Yes, thank you, I have a question for you on the site plan that was just up.
With this one, or for this?
Yes, that one, either one actually, it's represented on both site plans. The shared driveway, as it goes off to the two separate driveways for the homes and the garages, what materials will the driveway be? On our site plan, it looks like it's hashed out, like it looks like pervious pavers. Is it concrete? I'm curious to know what type of materials will be used from the shared driveway to the actual garage.
It will be concrete.
It'll be concrete, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for your presentation, appreciate it. Do we have any public comment on this proposal this evening?
No.
No? Is there anyone in the audience that wants to come up and speak in favor of this item this evening? Seeing none, any opposition want to come forward and speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public, oh, sorry. If you could just come to the mic, and, yep, absolutely, and make sure you say your name and your address, please.
This the right one? My name's John LaFretta, I live at 10935 South Kimball Bridge Crossing, adjacent to the property and consideration for development. As stated previously, we came to the last meeting to voice some concerns. Our primary concern is the drainage of the property. Many of the neighbors who also have, or live on adjacent parcels, have some significant drainage issues at the back of their lots, my lot included, and we're concerned about the removal of the trees and the installation of this large paved area, which we think are concerned about, that will contribute to further erosion of our backyards. That's our primary concern.
All right.
And that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, appreciate you speaking.
Yep.
Anybody else would like to make a? All right, so we'll close public comment, I'll open this up for discussion with the board, and we can certainly get Mr. Woodman up if you have any other questions.
No, I think, Michael, if he could come and address the stormwater?
Stormwater.
Yep.
So stormwater will be addressed if this application is approved by City Council, the next step will be a land disturbance permit, and so that is typically the time where you prepare the hydrology study and address stormwater. The applicant will be limited to, they cannot increase the rate of flow off this property onto adjacent properties, so they will need to maintain the flow of water off this property onto other properties that will be reviewed at that time.
Mike, I've got one. Mike, while you're up there, could you also just give the public an overview on the tree survey process and the role of the city arborist and the review that took place, and how we support what's proposed?
Sure, so the applicant with the public hearing is required to provide a tree survey and assessment, and we, our code says that the developer shall make reasonable efforts to save trees on the property. And on this property, the applicant does show tree save areas, and I'll just point those out. So this wavy line here, all of this, all the trees in this area will be saved, all the trees in this area will be saved, and then all the trees in this area will be saved on this property. So we've reviewed that, the city arborists reviewed that as part of this public hearing application, and believes that the applicant has made reasonable efforts to save trees on this property.
Thank you.
And I'll make one other question for you. And the landscape plan, that'll be reviewed by staff when it gets to further onto the design phase.
So the landscape plan is required with the land disturbance permit, so that will be reviewed at that time. We'll be looking for, we will be looking to make sure that the site complies with the landscape strip requirements along the road, as well as the landscape strip requirements along the perimeter of the property. And then any conditions of zoning related to landscaping will be looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll turn it over to a discussion by the board. Hearing none, does anyone have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Love saying that, sorry. I'd like to offer a motion to approve Z-23-11 OC Place, 4050 Kimball Bridge Road, subject to the 12 conditions as presented by Mr. Woodman in our previous hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Reeves, second it? Hearing other discussion, I'll go ahead and call for a motion, please raise your right hand to approve. All right, thank you very much. And this will go to, actually, Michael, when does that go to the next meeting? Sorry, when does it go to council? Just so I'm clear, the right date, I'm sure it was in my notes. November 13th, this will go to council, we are just the recommending body, they will have final decision on that. So thank you very much for coming back with those, appreciate it. All right, next up on our agenda is MP-23-04/V-23-24 Pickle and Social. Mr. Woodman, I believe you're presenting again.
Thank you. The next request before you is a request for master plan amendment in variance to allow for the construction of an indoor and outdoor pickleball facility and an 8100 square foot freestanding restaurant on 6.25 acres, and this is in the North Point overlay. Master plan amendment is requested to the Delta Credit Union master plan to add recreation facility indoor and outdoor as a permitted use. The applicant is also requesting a variance to allow parking between the street and the freestanding restaurant along Rock Mill Road. And I do have the location map on the overhead, property is located at 0 North Fulton Expressway, to the northeast corner of Haynesbridge Road and Rock Mill Road. This is an undeveloped property, it's zoned O&amp;I, office institutional. Georgia 400 is located to the north, as you can see. The Fulton County Schools Maintenance Yard is located to the east. A North Point Common Shopping Center is located to the south, this is where Best Buy is located. And then the Atlanta Center of Dental Health is located across Haynesbridge to the west. This master plan was approved originally in 2006. It allowed for office, bank, service, retail use, and restaurant. There was a rezoning that was considered on this property back in, last year, in 2022, to allow a townhome development, however, that request was ultimately denied. This is the applicant's site plan, as you can see, the freestanding restaurant is at the corner of Haynesbridge Road and Rock Mill. This is the parking that requires the variance between the building and the street. This is the pickleball facility here, so this is the building here with the indoor car courts, as well as a 14,000 square foot restaurant and rooftop bar. There is also outdoor courts between the road, Rock Mill Road, and the building. Parking is generally behind the buildings, except for in this location. There's also a stormwater facility proposed at the northeast corner of the property. And then this is the Georgia 400 buffer on the on-ramp here, so this is a 60-foot buffer that will remain undisturbed. And then this is a tree save area, so this is the significant, the city arborist has looked at this property a few times, we've had a couple of proposals on it, and this is where the concentration of good quality trees are, there's a bunch of oaks in this location, and so the applicant did come forward with this tree save in that area, saving those oaks. One thing I failed to mention in the pickleball facility is there is a basement level of the building, and that's about 5,000 square foot, and that will be for professional office. So this is, this concept is pickle and social, the applicant also has the roaring social concept that is in the basement of the Hamilton Hotel, and also has the fairway social over at the Maxwell Development. So this is another concept. The professional office space in the basement will be his headquarters for those businesses. The Unified Development Code parking regulations would require 195 parking spaces for this development, there are a total of 202 parking spaces provided on the site plan, so they do exceed the minimum requirements. North Point overlay requires 5% amenity space, as well as 10% civic space, that would be just under an acre of open space total, .94 acres. The site plan actually depicts 1.22 acres of open space on the property, or closer to 20%. And those areas, so there's civic space that's shown around the pickleball building here, the tree save area has been improved, so the trees are being saved, but there's also a gathering area and pass that are proposed in that particular area, and that will also represent open space. And then the applicant's renderings, so there are two renderings for the freestanding restaurant building at the corner. And then there are several renderings of the actual pickleball facility. This is just a bird's eye view down at the development, this is with the roof off, so that you can see the courts inside the building, and then these are the exterior courts. This is the restaurant and rooftop area. That's just with the roof. And then this gives you views of that rooftop area that's proposed. Again, this is in the North Point overlay, so the applicant does have a requirement for seven eco-district points, and they have identified enhanced bicycle amenities, alternate transportation, and additional landscape civic space on the property to meet those eco-district measures. Of course, reviewing our criteria for the master plan amendment in variance, we felt that the use was suitable in view of the zoning and use of, and development of adjacent and nearby properties, which are developed with non-residential uses. We really felt that the rising popularity of pickleball, we believe that this use is going to be representing a significant draw to the area. We don't believe that the proposal will adversely impact the natural environment the applicant is showing tree saves on the property. And we believe this proposal will just add to the recreational opportunities in the city, and it does meet the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property. We do think that the shape of the property does represent an extraordinary exceptional condition of the property, as well as the fact that the property does have three road frontages with the 60-foot Georgia 400 tree buffer. So there are some exceptional conditions on the property that support the hardship for the variance. The applicant did provide a citizen participation report, they indicated that the applicant did not provide any responses to their letters, but they did indicate that they received a verbal comment from someone asking about traffic. And they did explain the trip generation report to that person who commented that they were okay with it after that was explained. And then this application was shown to the public at the community zoning information meeting on October 11th, and there were no public comments on the sign-in sheet. And with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to 13 conditions, and I'll go through those quickly. Condition one is a site plan specific condition tying into the site plan prepared by Paradigm dated 10/4/23. Two, recreation facility indoor and outdoor, professional office and restaurant with no drive-through shall be permitted uses in the Delta Community Credit Union master plan. Three, ties the architecture and materials to Exhibit A, the renderings that I just showed you, and does require final approval by Design Review Board. Four is relates to the variance to allow the parking between the freestanding restaurant building and Rock Mill Road, and ties it to that site plan. Condition five, additional landscaping consisting of a mix of native and/or drought tolerant trees, shrubs and grasses shall be required around the outdoor courts in an effort to soften the look from the street with final approval by DRB. Six captures the open space as shown on the site plan. Seven is specific to the civic space at the corner of Haynesbridge and Rock Mill Road, and requires that that area include decorative hardscape, landscape, and North Point eco-district monument or district threshold. And then depending on the monument or threshold, if there's a unique monument, that will go to Cultural Arts Commission, so there are already district thresholds that were identified in the North Point overlay, creative placemaking plan, so those have already been created, those would just go to DRB. But if it's a unique monument, so specially designed for this particular property, it will go to Cultural Arts Commission for approval. And of course, that corner area, the open space, as well as any of the improvements in that area are the responsibility, maintenance responsibility of the property owner. Condition eight, ties the eco-district points as identified by the developer, ties the developer to those points. Condition nine, green stormwater design techniques shall be employed to address runoff reduction as approved by staff, that's just things like bio swales and bio retention. Condition 10, are the streetscape requirements along Haynesbridge Road, so the planted planter between the curve of the road and the sidewalk, as well as improving the sidewalks and decorative pedestrian lighting. Condition 11 is the same streetscape, but this is for Rock Mill Road, so again, addressing the planter, the sidewalk, and decorative pedestrian lighting. Condition 12, developer shall provide an enhanced pedestrian crossing across Rock Mill Road at Haynesbridge Road, and at the entrance to the Fulton County Schools Maintenance Facility, which shall include the North Point Eco-District Leaf Pattern Pavement Markings. Enhanced crossings shall be eligible for impact fee credits as approved by staff. Let me just show you real quick what that is. So that would be an enhanced pedestrian crossing here at Haynesbridge and Rock Mill Road across Rock Mill. And then on the far end of the North Point Common Shopping Center, there's already an existing path and stairs that lead up to this landing point here, and so what we're asking the applicant to do in front of the Fulton County Schools Maintenance Facility, which is this property, is to provide that enhanced pedestrian crossing across Rock Mill Road, so that you can get access to this trail that leads to the shopping center. And then condition number 13, the last condition, is the tree save condition, tying it to the tree save shown on the Paradigm Plan dated 10/4/23. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman, appreciate that. Anybody have a question for staff?
I do, sorry, Michael. You, I guess it's, condition number 12, with the enhanced pedestrian crossing across Rock Mill. Rock Mill is one lane in each direction, right?
Correct.
So when you're coming out of Rock Mill to turn onto Haynesbridge, you're already, you're dumping right into the turn lane for 400? So how, it seems like it's a, it's a pretty busy corner as it is, and how do we try to enhance pedestrian crossing there? Are we talking about a crosswalk or hawk signal, what do we?
What we're referring to is going to be painting, a painting crosswalk on, at grade at this location. So you're correct, so when you're coming westbound here and you arrive at Haynesbridge Road, it's a forced right turn only.
Right.
So any of the pavement markings across here, we can use things like different, instead of just using the typical white. instead of just using the typical white paint that's used with the piano keys, you can use different color paint there just to kind of draw attention to vehicles as well as pedestrians. So that's what we mean by enhanced crosswalk. With, in the North Point area too, we have the Creative Placemaking Plan that showed the enhanced crosswalks with the leaf pattern as well. So you could use that leaf pattern as well to kind of designate the pedestrian area from, to differentiate that, the pedestrian area from maybe the bicycle area.
So, so the enhancements are basically how we design the crosswalk itself?
Yes.
Basically.
Yes.
So there's nothing else in addition to that?
There's no hawk signal. This is not intended for the applicant to do a hawk signal or anything like that. This would really be, for the most part, limited to the thermoplastic paint on the roadway and maybe some signage.
Okay. And would that same design on that crosswalk be replicated on the Rock Mill further down?
It may not, they may not look exactly the same. We're going to be a little bit more limited here at Haynes Bridge. Public Works was working on a reconfiguration of, at this location already, which I believe that the applicant captured on their plan. But what this looks like is probably going to look much different than the one down here. The one across from the Fulton County School Maintenance Facility will probably have a little bit more flexibility because it'll be a direct crossing of the road, whereas this, this has got quite a bit going on at this location already.
And so our traffic engineers, I mean, they thought based on the traffic that they're anticipating here with the number of cars and trips and that type of thing, that it didn't require anything more than an enhanced crosswalk?
Yeah, there were, there was no recommendation for any needed road improvements.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We have another question over here.
So as Ms. Richards was saying, that's, that's pretty busy. And when you come out, it's like, you know, there you are. If you don't want to go north on 400, you're in a bit of a pickle. So I'm just wondering if, what kind of signage, there'll be, like I know for some of the other areas on Rock Mill, it's kind of local traffic or traffic from somebody who comes and goes every day, like Fulton County Maintenance Department. Those people are all really familiar with it. This, I think, is a very cool use, but what kind of signage? I don't know what we're going to do. Like I would, you know, hate to have a bunch of people coming out and making a tough intersection worse.
I'm not a traffic engineer. So I don't really know the exact type of signage, but it will have to go through a design and approval by the experts that would review that. I don't know exactly what that signage will look like or what the design will look like until the experts look at it.
And I think we can't really do much in terms of crosswalks or anything like that because it's too close to 400, like where it dumps out. So I mean, I think we have what we're going to have. It's just, I will, I will be interested in seeing how they deal with that dilemma.
Any other questions for Michael? I do have one question. So one of the things I think once you get into the traffic study and the analysis further, the concern I have is if you're exiting 400 from the northbound lane, you're doing a U-turn at that road to turn around to get back in here. So I think that that is going to potentially cause some concern there with the traffic and some signaling that will need to be adjusted. Is that, you know, to go, to get to it, if you're coming off 400, you have to go all the way around to Rock Mill and three lights. The easy answer is going to be U-turn there. So I think you're going to have some things to look at in the future.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. We'll allow the applicant to come up and make a presentation. And if you could just remember to state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Excuse me, sir. You need the mic. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is this better?
Yeah.
My name is Neil Freeman, 959 Middle Fork Trail, Swanee, Georgia. I am the managing member of Pickle and Social Alpharetta LLC, which is the applicant. Also the CEO of Competitive Social Ventures, the holding company for Pickle and Social, Roaring Social, and Fairway Social. We are in agreement with all 13 of the staff recommended conditions. One point on the variance is that in order to, and that's why I wanted to just see the plan. Yeah. So if you look at the freestanding restaurant, which will be a white tablecloth, by the way, and it's very nice, and they wanted the ambiance of the saved trees. So the juxtapose was there and it created us the need to have a parking in between the restaurants. That was the reason for that, was to create the ambiance with that tree save. Another point of clarity is that our rendering shows on our easternmost two courts, we do want to have an outdoor pavilion. We recognize that outdoor pavilion will be subject to the design criteria since it will be an outdoor structure. We have found already, even though we haven't opened, we've found a demand for corporate events. Corporate events love to be outside, but if they're going to bring everybody there, they want to make sure the event's going to happen. So we need to have something that's going to prevent rain, but they want to be outside. So it was important us to have that. It was, again, it's shown on the rendering, but it's not on the site plan. But we'll, we had that clarified before we go to City Council. This is, this would be the trifecta here in all in Alpharetta. So it's important that this was offload where our corporate headquarters would be. So it just worked out nicely the way the land falls to the northeast corner, that we utilized that fall to create a basement. And so that is where the Competitive Social Ventures is, we're planning on having all three brands there. So we, obviously we're quite fond of Alpharetta, and it's been good to us, and hopefully so far we've been good to them. And you're going to love Pickle and Social. So with that, I'll just hold for any comments.
Any questions?
I have one. Hi, hello. I love the whole concept. I think it's, looks wonderful. The only question I would have is, as a pickleball fan, I'm assuming there might be tournaments and lots of people coming and going. So if we, I'm worried about parking. Like, and I'm assuming we're not going to allow you to park cars on this, on Rock Mill Road, right?
Absolutely not.
So have you thought about what you would do if, if you exceeded the parking problem?
Yes. So this is not set up as a tournament venue as priority one. This is an entertainment center that's hopefully going to have great food and beverage and a great place to go and hang out. And by the way, it has great pickleball courts, both indoor and outdoor. We will hold some, probably some local events. And before we do that, we will have remote parking agreements. And we will only be on, like on a Saturday or Sunday, and we would make an arrangement with the office buildings that would have vacant lots. So we would not, our head of pickleball runs the Atlanta Open, so we know the whole shuttling system. So we certainly wouldn't, wouldn't be parking on Rock Mill. It would be a remote system.
Perfect. Thank you.
But again, that's, that's not our top priority.
Ms. Richards?
Yes, thank you. So as a pickleball player, I will tell you, everybody's been asking for years, when is Alpharetta going to get a pickleball facility? And I'm thrilled to see that it's indoor/outdoor as opposed to just all indoor because I think our weather is tempered enough in the wintertime where you can still play outside. So very excited about this, very excited about it. But I will tell you, if you don't think you're going to be hosting tournaments, you're going to, you're going to be deluged with requests. It's a huge business opportunity. And I'm sure you've done your homework on it, and you understand how fast it's growing. And there's not a lot of sites that can host those types of tournaments. So I would encourage you to work with your neighbors with some off-site parking arrangements quickly because I think you're, I think that's going to be a large factor of what you're going to be looking at.
Yeah. Absolutely. And we, I didn't want to come across, so we're not going to have tournaments, but it's just not our top priority. It is, it's being a place where everybody, whether you play or not, you can just come there and enjoy our place. But again, the guy who put on the Atlanta Open is our pickleball director. So it will not only be great tournaments, but they'll be great tournaments.
Two other questions. The pavilion over the last two courts, what height structure will that be roughly?
Again, we, it's one of the, one of the things that makes us a nice place to play in a tournament is that we are planning on at least 20-foot clear, maybe even up to 22-foot clear. And so that would make the structure 25, maybe at a pitch 26. But we would certainly, the tapered columns would be, meet the design criteria of what we did. What we do, we just, we're getting ready to open December 7th, sorry for the plug, at our first Pickle and Social in Gwinnett. And on that one, we put brick and nietzsche-ha on the columns, and so it would be a nice.
Decorative.
It's a nice look.
Okay. And then on the restaurant, any insight on who might be coming there? I know it said steak, prime steak on the, on the renderings, but can you give us?
Not allowed to say, but you will recognize the name and certainly enjoy what they offer. I'm just not allowed to say at this point.
And I just have to ask, we have so many steak houses already in Alpharetta? I mean, five or six that I can think of right off the top of my head? So clearly there's demand for more?
This is a very established group that knows what they're doing.
Okay.
You're going to be happy.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I did, I did have one. I just want to clarify, these outdoor courts are lit?
I'm sorry? Yes, ma'am. They're LED, no light pollution. It's amazing, as you know, what those things do.
And what are, what are the hours of operation for the outdoor courts?
Till 11:00.
All right. Seeing no other questions? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
We'll call you back up if we have any other questions. Do we have any public cards, comment cards for this?
We do not.
We do not. All right. Is there anyone in the audience? I'll give you an opportunity to come up and speak in favor. Any opposition? All right. I'll close public comment, and I'll turn it over to the council for discussion.
I'd like to ask Mr. Woodman a question regarding the height of the pavilion.
Thank you.
In the overlay district, do we, are there any specific code height requirements or maximums?
We, we have minimum height requirements actually along the road, and it's minimum of 20 feet. So that, that structure would meet that, that minimum requirement. This master plan actually allows up to eight-story, an eight-story office building. So it actually allows pretty significant height.
Heights. And an outdoor structure would, it would, it would apply to outdoor structures as well as buildings?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Michael or the applicant? Mr. Woodman, thank you. All right. Open it up to any discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Hearing none? Okay, great.
I'll make a motion to approve MP-23-04/V-23-24 Pickle and Social Delta Credit Union Master Plan, subject to 13 conditions as provided by staff.
Second. Thank you, Todd, for seconding. Appreciate that. All right. Raise your right hand for all those in favor. Motion passes. It'll be heard by council November 13th. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Moving right along. Keep rolling. No breaks? Next item up for consideration is MP-23-06 Celebri School. Did I say that incorrectly? I apologize. 915 North Point Drive. And... Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Oh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This next item before you, we're passing out a site plan that we see, received today that's slightly different, but it's different in a good way because they actually added additional landscape space and removing some of the pavement. So that's the plan that I'll use here in just a few minutes. So the submitted request, if approved, would allow the applicant to operate a daycare center in a 12,011 square foot building formerly occupied by Golden Corral. And a master plan amendment is requested to the North Point Commons Master Plan to change daycare center from an accessory use to a permitted use within Pod C. The property is located at 915 North Point Drive at the northeast corner of North Point Parkway and North Point Drive. And you can see it's located near the Embassy Suites. The Chuck E. Cheese is located just to the west. You have Milton Park that's across the street to the east. And then this is an office building that's located just to the north. So when this master plan was approved in 1998, daycare was allowed, but it was allowed as up to 25% of an office building. So it was, it was proposed at that time that it would be a larger office development that would have those components up to 25% of daycare. So the request is to be able to have a standalone daycare. The Golden Corral Restaurant has been empty since 2020. The school that's proposed is an early childhood education and daycare operating since 1994. They have locations in Maryland, Delaware, Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Pennsylvania, and Texas. This will actually be their first one in Georgia. They do have a pre-K program, and this is, they will also serve infants through pre-K with the possibility of before and after school care. Hours of operation are planned from Monday to Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. And I didn't put the site plan up here yet. So they do plan to use the existing building, but they also plan to add the, the outdoor playground. So there'll be removal of parking spaces in order to put the playground. And they are showing a hatched area that will be landscaping. Also, for safety concerns, they'll have a privacy fence around that playground area. And they'll also install bollards around the edges of, between the landscaping, of course, and the parking spaces. Parking is abundant. They have more than enough parking spaces because, of course, it was built for more of a fast food buffet restaurant. They still will have 104 parking spaces, which exceeds the parking that's required. But they've talked about how this particular daycare operates with the younger kids. The parents park and walk their children into the daycare, so they don't have the typical large drop-off aisle that you may see at some daycares. They do plan to make some changes to the building. And we provided them with our North Point Overlay, which gives some guidance. It's not adopted architectural standards, but we do have some guidelines that we, we provide that the Design Review Board is requesting that new applicants in the North Point follow. And it's more of a contemporary architecture than you would see with, like the traditional historical that you would see in the downtown. So you see a little bit more contemporary elements. The applicant did find that stone was a material that was listed within that North Point Overlay. And they're including adding stone to the columns. There's adding siding as well as stone, and then putting some shutters over the dormers. We have sent this to our on-call architect to take a look at that and to also look at the North Point Overlay requirements. And they have incorporated improvements and elements that our architect found to be in compliance with that overlay. We also, of course, look at the parking. The parking numbers are actually reduced when you go from a restaurant to the daycare. So there are slightly reduced daily trips if it's approved. And also, the applicant's proposal did not trigger requirements for open space or eco-district measures. However, they are proposing two different eco-district measures, which are sustainable landscaping, which is one eco-district point, and then also alternative transportation, which could be up to two eco-district points. So although they're not required to comply because it's existing building that they're converting, they have proposed to do some of that compliance. The report submitted by the applicant states that property owners within 500 feet were notified. notified, and they did not receive any comments regarding their intent. The staff reviewed all of the criteria, and we found that the use does not conflict with the established review criteria for a master plan amendment. And the proposal would allow a daycare center which represents a neighborhood-level service that would complement surrounding uses. And then, of course, we're having a different, additional residential that's being added and built nearby, as well as the existing office that's within close proximity. So we felt like this would be a benefit use to the North Point area. So we are recommending approval with nine different conditions. Number one, the daycare center shall be listed as a permitted use in the North Point Commons Master Plan, Pod C. Two, sites shall be developed substantially similar to the site plan prepared by Colliers dated 8/21/2023. Sites shall be limited to daycare center use only. Three, has to deal with the building exterior. Four, eco-district points shall be substantially similar to the description provided in the staff report. As approved by staff, developers shall provide detailed information at LDP and building permit regarding compliance with each requested eco-district measure. And five, property owners shall assess site landscaping or replace missing, dead, or dying landscape material with final approval by DRB. And new landscape materials shall be sustainable, native, or drought-tolerant landscaping with final approval by DRB. Six, playground equipment, vinyl privacy fence and bollards shall be screened from view along North Point Parkway and North Point Drive, final approval by DRB. Seven, minimum 10-foot-wide planters shall surround the playground area and shall be planted with native and/or drought-tolerant landscape material to provide an opex screen with final approval by DRB. Eight, dumpsters shall have painted metal doors that complement the primary building as approved by DRB. Nine, planter along North Point Drive and North Point Parkway shall be planted with a row of shrubs or grasses that are native and/or drought-tolerant as approved by DRB. And I think that Michael handed out an open space condition to add, and this is just something for your consideration since they did provide an updated site plan that has additional impervious area. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
So before we turn it over, I just, I did want to clarify one thing because I just want to make sure I have it right. You referenced the site plan 8/21/2003, and that's not the one that we got today?
So this would be, this, the only thing that's different with this site plan is the hatched area.
Okay.
So in order to address this new site plan, we're recommending that you add this condition that we wrote out.
Okay.
Which is, which is just minimum .21 acres of open space shall be reserved and approved substantially as depicted in Exhibit B.
That's what I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. All right. I'll turn it over to the commissioners for any questions for Mrs. Cook.
Quick question for you, Kathy. With, if they're not really going to need 108 parking spaces, is this an opportunity to perhaps remove some impervious surface?
It really is. And we have asked the applicant to remove additional spaces. They said that they have taken that into consideration, and they may remove additional spaces. They're not required, but we do hope that that's something that they look and provide, which it just meets the North Point guidelines in the overlay and the intent of what we're trying to do at North Point, the more pervious space that they can provide in green space.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Question, Kathy. Are we requiring the vinyl privacy, the vinyl fence, or is this?
No, that's proposed by the applicant. We are requiring that it be, have landscape screening so that it's not visible.
And is there any kind of city, so the, this white vinyl fence, is there any kind of height requirement?
It's maximum of six feet is the height requirement. And then, of course, they'll have to go to Design Review Board with the materials and the color.
Okay. And that has to be approved by them?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you, Mrs. Cook.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'd love to hear from the applicant. If you could come forward and please state your name and address and all the, Ms. Reeves said, all the good stuff?
Good evening. I'm going to try to plug in. I've got a short presentation at Julie Sellers, 1776 Peachtree Street, Atlanta. Let me help plug you in the right place. Here on behalf of the applicant, and joining me is Mike Forrest, who is the Market Director for Celebri Schools, as well as Eric Hufn, who is with Colliers Engineer. User error. Can we see it? Okay, great. Thank you to Director Cook for the overview. Wanted to just take a few minutes to highlight a few things. Again, this is a request for a master plan amendment for the North Point Commons Master Plan. Childcare is essential for any healthy and thriving community. It's important for the employment centers to be able to have access to childcare options and for residents for both the short-term as well as long-term benefits for the cities. Going to go ahead, I think probably most of you, and I'm still, I've got to use readers now, but I'm still having difficulty with looking at you. I think most of you are probably familiar with where this property is located. It is the corner of North Point Drive and North Point Parkway, the former Golden Corral Restaurant. And just to tell you a little bit about Celebri Schools, as Kathy mentioned, they've been around since 1994. This would be the first Georgia location. They have 24 locations in Maryland. That's where the owner started, and they expanded. And they've really had success with their curriculum, with their practices, and they have now started expanding into different states. So I'm guessing it's not going to surprise any of you that as they were looking for Georgia locations in the metro Atlanta area, Alpharetta came to the top of the list for a variety of reasons, which is why you all love Alpharetta and call it home. And looking for a site that would be a good location for this, this would be, you know, their corporate store, again, their first location in Georgia. And this was actually a little bit surprising to me, you know? As companies do, they did their market research and looked at the statistics. In a three-mile radius around this area, there are 6,000 children, zero to five years old. That surprised me. But I think that it really highlights the need for childcare and early education opportunities. Within two miles of this area, there are nearly 3,500 school-aged children that are attending the schools in the area, and that's just a two-mile radius. Going ahead and just sort of cutting to why we are here, it is about the use. I have just the table that was mentioned. This is the North Point Commons Master Plan use chart. As you can see, the daycare center, it was allowed but only as an accessory use for 25% of the building. And we, of course, need to use the entire building here to be able to provide the school atmosphere. The plan is to go ahead and convert some of the existing parking spaces into a playground. There are a lot of state regulations for early childhood education and daycare uses, and part of that is dictating what size playground. So we have a 6,900-square-foot playground. And in addition to that, we have added additional green space. We do have the condition that originally was requesting 10 feet of planting around the fence. And we have been working with staff, we've been working with Stormwater, Jill Bassinet, with the city. What is important to us is to not make a commitment at this stage in a zoning process that may have unintended consequences. You all don't want to see me back before you as we go through permitting and realize, oh, wait a second. We thought that we would be okay offering that, but then that triggered some additional things that would make the use of the property for the daycare untenable. So we've been working really hard. We will continue to work. We had a very helpful meeting last Thursday that resulted in the plan that you see before you today. We're comfortable committing to that. We will continue to work on opportunities to continue to add some additional green space. Again, just to highlight, you know, we are losing parking spaces and adding the playground to the right of the building. As it relates to the fence question and talking to staff, we know that we're going to heavily landscape, but it was also very clear that the code and what Alpharetta, the ability to see the children's play equipment, that is why the opaque fence. So that's how we ended up with that type of, that vinyl fence. And we'll certainly be going through the Design Review Board to have the colors and everything finalized with that. Again, as Kathy showed and as some of you are probably familiar, this is the existing building, the Golden Corral. I believe that it is over 20 years old, and while I'm sure it served its purpose in the day, it could certainly use a bit of a facelift and some enhancements to really make it more fitting with the city and in particular with the North Point. This was not what you see on the screen. This was not our first attempt. We have been working. We have appreciated the feedback from the city staff and consultants and other city representatives to really help us fine-tune the design. And we have received some positive feedback on what you see before you, and that is the result of incorporating the feedback. This is, I think, really the conclusion. I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. Again, I do have the Celebri Schools Market Director is here with us as well as our engineer so that we should be able to answer questions that you may have. And we would appreciate your recommendation of approval for this master plan amendment.
Thank you very much. Good presentation. And as someone who is heavily involved in our schools, I can, those are correct stats, 6,000 kids in a three-mile radius, for sure. I'll turn it over to the commissioners if anyone has a question for our applicant.
I do. Ms. Sellers, I have a few. Can you put that rendering?
Yes.
So I just, oops, actually, the new rendering, the one that, the building, yes, that. So the roof will be completely swapped out.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I did not really address. So this is, this is the existing roof. This is, the entire roof is being replaced. So it is, it is being replaced. So just to go in a little more detail, this would be replaced with a shingled roof. There's a board and batten that would be put where you see kind of the lighter neutral color that's in place of kind of that stucco area. Again, the brick, it's got these odd, from an, you know, just design perspective, these bands, and it's dated and tired. And so refacing that with the stone to really bring the neutral elements in the different materials that does update it more. And again, just the color palette being very neutral. We did confirm with staff in the condition, you know, there's the reference to no primary colors. The Celebri's logo is the green and blue, and that was acceptable. I mean, it's, but we do not, this is not a school that has a brightly colored building. This is a company that operates schools in neighborhood settings and really does tailor to fit in and be reflective of the community.
Great. Just one last question on the most recent site plan that we were given tonight. If you could put that up and point out, I'm having, I'm having a hard time seeing where the fence and bollard strips now are with the new site plan. Is it just on the back end?
No. So the fence will be around the perimeter of the playground. The bollards are placed there for safety purposes so that if, you know, goodness forbid some, a car, somebody had a medical situation and they lost control of their car, so that the bollards would stop. So if you can imagine, if you're inside the school and you walk out into the playground, you have the 1,690 square-foot playground area, then the fence. On the exterior of the fence, you would have the bollards, and then outside of that, we would have the landscaping. And so if you can see on here, and I'm trying to see if I can zoom in, there's almost a, like the orange outline, if you can see that? That would be the fence area.
I see.
And so you can see, it's a very significant amount. I think we've got 22 feet, if memory serves. 20 feet of additional green area.
From the fence?
From the fence to the new curb. And then 11 feet on the right-hand side of the page. That would be 11 feet is that notation right there.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And so my last question is, I think the changes to the building is significant. It really sort of takes away that orangey Golden Corral feel, which is awesome. But the vinyl fence, for me, is a little bit of a struggle in the sense that it appears, and I don't know how to say this delicately, but cheap. It just cheapens to me, you know, Alpharetta, obviously, one of the reasons they're coming to Alpharetta is because we are such a fabulous city, and aesthetically, we have some really high standards. And the vinyl fence, just, I know we're trying to hide play equipment, and I don't have another suggestion, but I just wanted to share with you that I just was hoping there might be some other alternative that provides the privacy of the equipment but doesn't look so cheap.
And we'll, thank you for the feedback. We'll certainly explore options to see what other materials might be out there to satisfy the city's requirements, to provide that opaque screening. Certainly, I know in other areas, you see the more picket fence, but that wouldn't serve the purpose here.
Right.
We do think with the requirement, with the landscaping on the exterior, I think that the public really would not see much of the fence material because of all the planting surrounding it.
From the outside.
But we'll certainly be happy to continue. And it may even be, you know, from a color palette standpoint, something that, maybe not white, but something that's a little more neutral that would help blend in with the landscaping better.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Reeves has a question?
I was just going to make a comment about the vinyl because you can get different colors. And then the other thing is, it's really weird, but like PVC wood has come like so far. I'm actually, like, I'm replacing most of the wood trim on my house when it goes, when it starts, looks like it gets tired and carpenter bees got to it. PVC wood can be painted. I mean, and it's utterly low maintenance. So I'm, I mean, like, I know what you're thinking about with the white vinyl, but I think that it can come in multiple colors, and I don't even know if they're making fences in PVC wood, but it has come so far from where it was even five or 10 years ago.
That's great to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Do we have any public comment cards submitted for this item?
We do not.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item? Seeing none, anyone would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I'll turn it back to the council and to see if anyone has any questions or for Ms. Cook or any discussion. I'll just make a comment. I think it's a great use of the space, and I think just the way everyone turns up to get onto 400 from there, it's an excellent location. And I do think that the fence screening, the privacy fence, we'll trust in DRB will do a good job in making sure that's aesthetically pleasing with the guidance of staff. So that's my only comment.
I'll make a motion to approve unless somebody else.
I'll make a motion to approve unless somebody else has a comment. Approve MP-23-06, Celebrry, am I saying that right?
Correct.
Slash North Point Commons Master Plan, subject to the nine conditions provided by staff. And the open space condition provided, should I read it? Minimum 0.218 acres of open space shall be reserved and improved substantially as depicted on the site plan prepared by collars?
Collars.
Collars, thank you. Labelled Exhibit B, property owners shall be responsible for maintenance of open space areas.
And you'll make that Condition 10 correct?
Yes. Thank you.
I can second.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves, for second. See any other questions? I'd like to call a motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Thank you very much. This motion will be heard at City Council.
November 27.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. So, the next action item on our agenda is MP-23-07 slash CU-23-04 Free Chapel Worship Center at 3755 Mansell Road. And I believe Mr. Woodman, you're going to be presenting?
Thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners. The next item before you is a request from Free Chapel Worship Center. They're requesting a master plan amendment and conditional use to operate a church synagogue in a former, in the former Woodside Terrace Office Building. Master Plan Amendment is requested to the Mansell Ridge Park Master Plan, Pod A, to add church synagogue. And a conditional use is requested to allow Free Chapel Worship Center to operate a church synagogue on the subject property. The applicant also requested a master plan amendment to add daycare center as a conditional use. However, that use is already listed as a conditional use in this master plan and in Pod A, so that is not necessary. The applicant is not seeking a conditional use for the daycare center with this application at this time. Subject property is located at 3755 Mansell Road. This is near the southwest corner of Mansell Road and Old Alabama Connector. Just to familiarize yourselves with the property, I've got some street views. So, this is at the signalized intersection leading into this office development from, looking from Mansell Road. And then this is just up Mansell Road to the west of the entrance. So, the entrance is down here. You see, there's a sign here that identifies Mansell Ridge Park, that this area, the master plan. This is a view of the office building from Mansell Road on a little bit further east, so this is closer to Old Alabama Connector. And then this is entering the property from Mansell Road. Just, actually, I wanted to just go back, point something out. So, this is the office building from, from Mansell Road. From Mansell Road, it's a five-story building, so there's a terrace level with four stories above. And then as you enter the property, you can see the office building appears as four stories. This is interior to the site. This is just a drop-off area here, and the parking is across, directly across. This is views from the building looking out at the parking, and again, from the building looking at the parking. Then this is the aerial of the site. I also have the existing survey of the property. I think I'll use the aerial as we discuss this property. Property is owned O&amp;I Office Institutional. The property is just under 10 acres, 9.9 acres. It was developed in 1997 with a four-story over terrace level office building. It's about 127,000 square feet. The Robby Zacharias International Ministries previously occupied this building, served as their headquarters. The master plan, Mansell Ridge Park Master Plan, that master plan was approved back in the 80s, '85. That was a 106-acre office park. And then the applicant's use is Free Chapel Worship Center. They have a congregation of approximately 550 members. They're currently operating at Denmark High School in Forsyth County. They're proposing to utilize the first, first two floors of the building, so the terrace level as well as the first floor of the office building. The building already includes a 300-seat auditorium, so it's set up nicely for the applicant's worship services. And they planned that 300-seat auditorium, they believe that they can accommodate up to 400 people at a particular service. That would include members of the congregation sitting in the 300 seats, as well as staff, volunteers, and children. They'll have areas outside of the main worship area for like a children's daycare during services. The applicant intends for the remaining three floors of the office building to be leased to professional office users. The church services are held on Sunday, and they have two services at 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. They did indicate in their application that the church would be open between 7:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on Sundays. However, the applicant was not, did not understand that we would have conditions that would tie to those particular hours of operation. And apparently, they occasionally will have an evening service. So, they did ask that the operation on Sunday be allowed from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And that's part of some changes that the applicant presented to Planning Commission. Church staff will also keep office hours during the week. They have six full-time employees and four part-time employees. Office hours will be from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. They also have some groups that meet during the week in the evening. They've got a youth group that meets on Wednesday evenings and a young adult group that meets some, on Tuesdays. The Unified Development Code requires 150 parking spaces for a 300-seat church. The property actually has 509 parking spaces, so the property meets parking requirements for both the professional office during the week, as well as for the church on the weekend and during the week. Of course, looking at the review criteria, we believe that the proposal would be suitable as it relates to the use and development of adjacent and nearby properties. There are a mix of uses adjacent. In the city of Alpharetta, there are office properties surrounding. And then in the city of, I believe it's Roswell, there's residential development. So, this townhome development over here, as well as detached development around the south side of the property, represent residential development. Property also has access from a signalized intersection on Mansell Road, as well as secondary access that goes out to Old Alabama Connector, so that will help with high-traffic volume times during Sunday services. This application represents reuse of an existing building, so we do not believe there'll be any impacts to the natural environment. And we do not believe there will be significant impacts to public facilities and services. The proposed use would actually generate fewer trips to the site during the weekday peak hours. Then as it relates to the conditional use, we do believe that the use is appropriately separated from similar uses and conflicting uses. There are no other churches in the immediate area here. There are, as I mentioned, the two adjacent residential developments. However, those properties, we believe, by way, that this development kind of sits by itself and has the access from this point, and this, the secondary access here, that it would not impact the surrounding residential. Item was shown to the public at the October 11th Community Zoning Information Meeting, and there were no public comments at that meeting. Bear with me one second. I lost part of my staff report. And staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to seven conditions, and I'll go through those. Condition one, church synagogue shall be added to the list of conditional uses in Pod A of the Mansell Ridge Park Master Plan. Two, church synagogue shall be approved, shall be an approved use at 3755 Mansell Road, and limited to no more than 300 seats in the primary auditorium. The balance of the building shall be limited to professional office and daycare center if a conditional use is approved for that use. Condition three, conditional use approval of the church synagogue shall be limited to Free Chapel Worship Center. So, this conditional use is only for Free Chapel Worship Center. No additional church synagogue use or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. Four, church synagogue shall be limited to worship services, professional offices, group church meetings, and childcare in conjunction with church, church operations and services. A daycare center use that is open to the public shall require approval of a conditional use permit. Five, Sunday worship services shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Six, church applicant shall hire an off-duty officer to control traffic if required by the city due to traffic impacts during services. In condition seven, there shall be no outside speakers or broadcasts, including music, which is audible from outside the building or off the property. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Appreciate it. And I just wanted to clarify the markups that we received. Did you want to cover that now, or? Thank you.
These are the markups that the applicant provided and were sent out to the Planning Commission. We are okay with these changes to the conditions.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. There you go. Any other questions?
Yeah, I actually have one. Very often, church spaces, besides actual scheduled worship services, are also put in use for weddings, funerals, similar life events, sometimes revivals, depending on the denomination. In other words, other than the usual scheduled Sunday activities or Wednesday night activity. Do we know if that's been discussed, and if 300 seats are actually going to be considered enough?
I did not have that conversation with the applicant, but the applicant is here today, this evening, so they should be able to address that question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We would love to hear from the applicant, make a presentation, and please don't forget to state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I believe this is already turned on. It's green.
Yes, perfect.
Let me cut that. While I'm getting set up, my name is Jenna Lee, and I'm with the law firm Troutman Pepper. Address is 600 Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, 30308. And I'm here on behalf of the Free Chapel Worship Center. One moment while I get this set up. So, thank you, Michael, for such a thorough presentation, and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for allowing us the opportunity to walk through this. Michael covered literally almost everything we have in our presentation, so I'm going to breeze through it and then jump to the end and talk through some of those markups that Michael showed you on the overhead. And I'll mention now also that we do have several representatives from Free Chapel here this evening, so we can answer any questions you have about those, those events and other activities that might be held at the church. So, again, this is 3755 Mansell Road, and we're seeking a master plan amendment and then the conditional use permit to allow for the church synagogue use. As Michael already noted, this was previously used for a traditional office space, and Free Chapel proposes to use the terrace level and first floor for their use, and will lease or sublease the, the other floors of the office building to professional office spaces. This, I'll, I'll go ahead and speak to this now, but it's a, one of the markups in the proposed conditions that the primary church services are 9:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. on Sunday mornings, but we do want to afford that flexibility in keeping the hours of operation a little longer so that they can hold services in the evening as, as they grow and as they, as they need to moving forward. And as, as Michael mentioned, there are other meetings and group activities at the church during the week, in particular, these, the youth group meetings, and others that are held occasionally on weekday evenings. And to reiterate again, we understand that a conditional use permit is required for a daycare use, and that's something that Free Chapel has considered, but understands fully that if they were to expand the scope at this location, that we would come back before the Planning Commission and the council for that use. Again, here's our site plan. As Michael mentioned, you know, we're using the existing facility, no, no redevelopment, no expansions here. We're using it as-is. And then finally, the proposed conditions, I think the primary changes are to the number of fixed seats. We'd like to increase that to 400, again, just to give Free Chapel a little bit of flexibility and growing room, understanding that to do so would require an expansion of the existing auditorium. Again, that's just simply to, so that they don't restrict themselves more than they have to from the, from the outset. Second, some of the marked-up language was to clarify that while the church use is limited to the Free Chapel, Free Chapel use, that the subleased office space on the other floors is open to be subleased to other users. And, and that was purely just a language clarification issue. And then finally, on number five, we've marked it up, again, to give that flexibility from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Again, just understanding that the primary services are in the morning hours on Sundays, but just to give some additional breathing room in the event they have evening services as well. And with that, I will open it up to questions and let you know, again, we do have representatives here. If you have any specific questions regarding Free Chapel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Did you have a question?
I was just wondering about an answer from Alex. Right. I had actually asked the question about other uses for the auditorium space, like weddings, funerals, you know, other celebrations of life.
Yes. That's a really great question, and I will let one of our Free Chapel members come up and, and speak to that. But my understanding is that the proposed 400 seats and the auditorium as-is would be adequate to accommodate folks who are attending any services at the chapel, but I'll, I'll let them speak to that specifically.
And don't forget to state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Tim Price, and address, yep, it's going to be 5290 Austrian Pine Court. Yep. Yeah, so, most of our services would be held on the, the service time shown. But we have a wedding chapel at another location, so we primarily use that for weddings. Don't see us really using it often for funerals, but occasional use potentially for that. And what was the other? Did you have one more?
Pardon?
I think she mentioned festivals or...
Like revivals. Yeah, most of that would be on Sunday evenings, those services.
And that would be indoors?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Your turn.
I, I have a question. He, he might be the one to answer this, but just out of curiosity, I think you're meeting in Denmark High School, correct?
Correct.
Right now? So, are you, just out of curiosity, are you moving to be more accommodating, to be more local for your congregation? Are you moving, I mean, I was just curious as to why you're moving here.
Yeah. Part of it is our congregation split between Forsyth and North Fulton, and two, it was just a potential opportunity for us to expand, because we do have several other locations kind of around the metro Atlanta area. locations kind of around the metro Atlanta area.
Well, we're glad you're moving here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do. Just a clarification, I think. So when we talk about funeral services, that would only be on a Sunday as well, is that correct? Or are you, I'm not clear?
Yeah, yeah. So funerals, we would, if we had a couple a year or something, we would work with the families based off of, you know, what works best for them. But I could see them happening on the weekend.
On Sundays? Or, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When we talk about worship.
It would, we would just be open and flexible to work and serve the family. I mean, I could see it happening on the weekend occasionally, but in those case-by-cases, we would just kind of work with them to see what best serves them.
Okay, thanks.
So I'm not sure, and staff might be able to help, but it seems that we're limiting the use during that time on Sunday, and if I'm hearing accurately, there is the potential for other events, I mean, obviously, if someone passes.
Right, right.
You know, that's got a timeframe on it. So I guess my question would be, does the applicant understand, or do I misunderstand, that this, that the church services and things like that are limited per the condition? I may misunderstand. It may be my misunderstanding.
Yeah, I think, Michael, if you could just clarify number five, because it does say Sunday worship services, which doesn't include the other events as described.
Yeah, and we did, with churches, we typically, we're only really concentrating on the worship service. So those other things that may occur, weddings on a Saturday or a funeral on any other, any day of the week, frankly. Condition five is really specific to the worship, the regular worship service, services. We know that there may be some additional events, but we don't know exactly when those may occur.
So just to be clear, they're free to schedule those accordingly, not within the constraints of number five?
Correct.
That's what we wanted to make.
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
And appreciate the markups. Do we have any comment cards on this item?
We do not.
Would anyone like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone opposed? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and turn it over to the Commissioners for their discussion or questions.
I have no questions. I guess I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves.
Yes, okay. All right. I'll make a motion to approve MP-23-07/CU-23-04 Free Chapel Worship Center, Mansell Ridge Park Master Plan, subject to the following conditions. And I'll go back and forth between staff's conditions and the markups. Condition one will be as Michael, as Mr. Woodman read. No changes there. Condition two, the, my motion includes the markup from the applicant church synagogue shall be approved, be in approved use at 3755 Mansell Road, and the primary auditorium for the church synagogue use shall be limited to no more than 400 fixed seats. The use of the property shall be limited to church synagogue, comma, office, and if a conditional use is approved for daycare center, use daycare center, period. Condition number three, including the applicant's markup, conditional use approval of a church synagogue shall be limited to Free Chapel Worship Center. No additional church synagogue use by a party other than Free Chapel Worship Center shall be permitted within the approved space. Condition four will be as Mr. Woodman read. Condition five will be Sunday worship services shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And conditions six and seven as Mr. Woodman reviewed.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Everyone that's in favor, please raise your right hand. Great. Thank you very much. This mean, this item will be heard November 27th. I just realized you write it at the top of all of these. So sorry, Michael. November 27th. We're just a recommending body. The City Council will hear it. But thank you very much. How I missed that all these years. All right. We are almost to the end. We have one more item. I believe it's Kathy. So we have one more item on the agenda. It's PH-23-20 Unified Development Code text amendments, temporary uses. Mrs. Cook?
Thank you. The last item on the agenda. And there is a change, apologies, and so we're passing that change out. So this is consideration of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code to amend UDC subsection 2.3.2, temporary uses, to remove carnival, circus, and fair as temporary uses that can be approved by staff. So what you received in your packet is we had just removed the allowances that staff can actually authorize carnivals and fairs and circuses, because that's the way we've been able to do that for the, in the past. And the change is in order for somebody to prepare a package and present that to City Council for their review and approval. And so that's what we added as part of J. That they can still be approved, but it would have to go through City Council versus staff. And there's a couple of reasons for that. There's more need for security when we're having these events. The events are larger, and there's really, we don't have enough public safety personnel to be able to fill in for those needed security needs. So we want them to have to have a package. We're not saying we wouldn't approve them. It's just that you have to have more information in order for them to make that decision. So that's the recommendation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
So Kathy, real quick, can you just move your page up just so people at home can see the bottom? Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. That's perfect. I don't have any questions. Anybody on the Commissioners?
Thank you.
There you go.
So I move that we approve PH-23-20 Unified Development Code text amendments, temporary uses.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? Yes. Do we have any public comment cards? I'll read my script.
We do not.
All right. I'd like to open for public comment. Seeing no one in the audience, I'll close public comment. I put it to the Commissioners for a vote. All those in favor of this item, please raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. Is there any other items from our Commissioners? Any other items from staff? Thank you very much. I believe we're going to have some IT presentation at our December meeting, and you'll give us the heads up on that before we come. So I make a motion that we adjourn. Thank you very much.
Well done, Madam Chair.